You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, a service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford.
Okay, we're going to get started for Town of Branford Board of Finance Special Meeting, November 3rd, 2025. And on the agenda, number one is Citizens Communication. And that is a time where people from the audience would like to address any of the items that are on the agenda. They're welcome to do that. And if so, I ordinarily limit it to three minutes per person. Josh, you want to come up?
So we have an election.
No, you've got to come up.
So I'm not sure how appropriate or...
You should state, if you state your name.
Oh, I'm Josh Brooks, 264 Thimble Island Road. I'm not sure if this is appropriate or not, and I'm going to do it anyway. We have an election tomorrow. The parties that are going to take, you know, over are all in this room. And I want the Board of Finance and whoever is Selectman to consider that because of what's happening in the nation now, we need to... Friday was the busiest day that the food pantry has ever seen. So we need, as a community and as a town, to get them funds as quick as possible to help offset the SNAP program and make people whole. So I would love that the Board of... I know you can't do it tonight, but I would love you guys to consider it moving forward and whoever is in power come Wednesday. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Sir, you'll come up to the...
I just want to ask a question. Do you have communications after what you do?
Uh, no.
No?
No. So, Ben Ock, if you want to speak, I think this gentleman's first, and then if you'd like to speak, you could come up, okay? Yes, come up to the table, please. And state your name, please.
My name's Gordon Hutchinson. I'm the Vice President of the Branford Land Trust. And I'd like to speak in favor of the movement of $195,000 to purchase the land located, as noted on Agenda Item Number Two. We feel that it would be a great addition to open space in Branford. There's a number of advantages. Eliminates private holdings, close to the supply pond, increases protection of watershed going into Episcopal Brook and down into the Branford River, and protects the northeast Ridge as part of the supply pond preserve. It also would provide an access point for the Highland Park people to walk directly into the supply pond preserve. And there's a number of protected wildlife that are in that area that would also deserve protection. So for a number of reasons, we're wholeheartedly in favor of acquisition.
Thank you, Gordon.
Thanks for having us.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Ock, you want to come up?
Thank you, Mr. Charles. I just now been able to see what you're actually on your agenda.
This is Anthony DeRoz.
What?
I'm just introducing yourself, you for the crowd.
I'm Anthony Alcderoz.
And for the TV, whatever.
I'm a citizen out of Stony Creek, concerned about what's going on. And I'd like to... I'll address the agenda. I think that this appropriation for land acquisition is probably a good idea, assuming that it's for Public Works. Now, I say that because this is a 12-year-old problem. They knew about this problem for 12 years. Where you are tonight, you should have been 10 years ago. But at any rate, the other item is on the purchase of the East Industrial Road project. Could you clear that up, just what that is, if you don't mind?
Yeah, usually we don't...
I know, I understand that. But usually you don't have a meeting on the eve of an election.
There... This is true. So the purchase on East Industrial Road will facilitate a building for Anson Land that will accommodate Public Works as well as a new firehouse out east and also accommodate engineering department and some other storage and administrative facilities, as well as house the Public Works. We'll be getting into deeper into that as...
Well, that... But I obviously won't have a chance to ask you a question after.
No, that's true. So if you have...
So I would just like to...
Sure.
And I got to assume this is the Freight Liner's property?
Yes.
Okay. That's about a three-acre parcel.
I think approximately, yes.
Right?
Five and... A little over five.
A little over five acres, because there's...
No, it's three. I went up to town...
Hey, Kurt.
It's three.
Back off, please.
Who's that?
That's your chair and section.
I'm not here to make trouble, Joe. I just want to ask a question, and I'm concerned about this.
You are, you are.
All right? And I want to... Because for 40 years, 40 years, this is nothing new up there on the East Industrial Road or anything new out east, particularly when it comes to the fire department. In fact, Bill Thompson was the chair when this whole thing started. That's how far back this goes. This is nothing new. And just to give a brief history to people that don't know, some things have changed in Branford. One of them is the lack of manpower. It's not the lack of equipment, it's the lack of manpower. But what the important thing is, why Branford doesn't get into a whole lot of trouble is because you've got a super building department that does their job, and you have fire marshals that do their job. You are not burning down buildings like we were back when I was servicing with the fire department. We would go out two, three times a week. Now, and it's a rare thing for them to go out now. It's all medical. The thing I'm going to address is, I don't think this particular parcel is good for either, either use. In the sense that I think there's better places for Public Works Department, and I think Public Works deserves a building that is mission-oriented on Public Works. It takes a considerable amount of building to do it. You have to have the lifts on the trucks, the building's got to be high enough, you know? There's a whole bunch of things that got to be done on that. And you need probably five to six acres or maybe seven acres to do the job properly. You've got your salt shed, your sand sheds, your loom, your plow racks, and all our equipment should be undercover. Instead of buying new, brand-new equipment regularly as a way of keeping things running, I think we should probably have a good repair facility that we can protect our investments. That's my feeling on Public Works. I think that particular property is totally inadequate for that. And secondly, it's much too big for Fire Department to use that building. The Fire Department doesn't need that big a building, the cost of what it would be to heat it, air-condition it, and then on top of that, I think the Fire Commission probably ought to explain to the Board of Selectmen before it comes to you of why they think it's a good idea to take this off the taxes, off the tax rule. And when in fact, all you need is probably a good acre of land for a fire station, you could build a three-bay garage, even a four-bay garage on an acre of land, and build it suitable enough for the people that have to live there. You can do that. And just look at the station, down at Station 5, that's a three-bay garage down there, and that's on a postage stamp land. But at any rate, the bigger problem with the Fire Department is probably the manpower. Now, if it's truly a dire emergency, I would recommend that you probably put down a pumpers in Station 5. And I would say that because it's... Station 5 is only a minute away from anything else that would be on East Industrial Road. And to jump into getting, buying this piece of property for that purpose, I just am very concerned. And that was the reason I'm here. I'm not here for any other reason to do battle or anything else. But what I would like to see, before this is brought, that you are entitled to see what all the other options that have been searched for for the last 12 years. I think that would be... You deserve that. And secondly, just as a thing, you know what? I've always respected the Board of Finance as probably the premier, one of the premier boards, this entire finance department. And I think it's very unfair that you are put in this position on the eve of an election, regardless of who wins. It just doesn't look right. So anyway, with that, I want to thank you for the opportunity to get, put my two cents in.
Thanks, Ock. Okay, anyone else like to address?
Gentlemen, ladies.
Jonathan Katz. I live at 27 Civil Creek Place in Branford. I'm on the Board of Directors of the Branford Land Trust once again. This is like, I don't know, my 13th year or something like that. I want to speak to you briefly with respect to the Open Space Fund transfer. Mr. Hutchinson on the board supports it. I support it. He advanced the ecological reasons for doing it. I want to tell you and perhaps remind you that this is also recreationally very important. It is part of the supply ponds, or will be part of the supply ponds, and it will expand the supply ponds by 12 acres. It already has existing walking trails on it that Mr. Kenny has been kind enough to give people permission to use. I've walked them. From a recreational standpoint, it is a spectacular piece of property. And we are very fortunate to have access to this parcel so that people can have essentially a wilderness experience in the middle of the town. He... Mr. Kenny is willing to sell it now for a fair price. That may well be a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity because he's willing to do it now. And so I wholeheartedly recommend to you an endorse and pass on the Land Trust's endorsement that you go forward and appropriate the $195,000 to buy this parcel. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to address the board? Frank?
Thank you, Chairman Mooney. I would like to add to those last comments regarding Item Number Two. I think it's a great use of this Open Space Fund balance to buy the 12 acres of open space. I mean, the supply pond is a great resource for the town and the townspeople. It's great for passive recreation. There's all kinds of, you know, really beautiful things in there. I mean, there's trails. I also read the... There's a great report by Richard Shanahan, which I think you have now, and he's the chairman of the Open Space Commission. And he talked all about, you know, all the outstanding things that are on this property. So it's a great use of the open space cash, you know, that we have. And so I do urge the board to vote for the acquisition of the 12 acres of open space.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, you're back here.
You know, sure.
Yeah, it's fine.
Good evening. I'm Richard Shanahan. I'm the Chair of the Open Space Commission for Branford. You already have my notes, I believe, that are in the agenda. I won't rehash those, but I wanted to pass out this map of the trail map of the supply ponds because I think that visually shows you the importance of this property, not just for the existing trails that cross it or run next to it, but also potential expansion, allowing access, additional access points. And that's basically it. I mean, you have all the other points, but I think that tells a lot right there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board? Okay. Item number two is to consider, if appropriate, approval request from the first Selectman to purchase 12 acres of land located on Chestnut Street and Brushy Plains Road. And resolve that the Board of Finance recommends to the RTM an increase in the total appropriation for fiscal '25-'26 Open Space Fund from $96,219 to $291,021. Additional appropriation will be funded from the Open Space Fund balance and be used to purchase 12 acres of open space. And so there is an increase of $195,000 of fund balance and then transferring out to acquire that. There's a subsequent land acquisition fund resolution that's proposed, resolved that the Board of Finance recommends to the RTM an appropriation of $195,000 to... In the land acquisition fund, this appropriation will be funded through a transfer from the Open Space Fund, again, transfer in of $195,000, land acquisition, $195,000. Jamie, before we start on this, could you just explain just to one of the reasons why you asked for the special meeting?
Sure.
And again, there's two items of land purchase that may or may not be controversial, but...
No, absolutely. Actually, I was going to open with that, Joe, based on the comments and just really for the public's benefit, although it's been stated around the eve of an election. However, I'm just stating this more for the public's... For them to know and be aware, in case those who are watching. The Board of Finance is not subject to the election. You are an appointed body. The six, the current five members who serve on the Board of Finance will be serving on, will be on the term of the election. I'm here before you for these two land acquisitions because negotiations have started with both of these property owners over the past, you know, couple weeks, months. And for me being here, and again, it's important to note initially with the... Although we had expressed, when I say "we," the town had expressed an interest in the Kenny property previously, you know, a few years ago. But, you know, more recently, we were approached by the owner interested in selling to the town. With the public, the 1521 East Industrial Road site, that was initiated through inquiry that I had made to the owner, which then began discussions. In those discussions with both of these parties, both had expressed an interest in kind of moving this forward in a timely manner, but also since I was the one who was directly involved in these discussions and negotiations and working with, they wanted to see the process begin here, to provide some assurances that it may continue to move forward. We are not the only parties or only options that either of these two sellers have. However, they are interested, recognizing that we are a strong counterparty in both situations, they are, and they are interested in proceeding with the town. So that's why it's initiated here tonight, Joe. As the board knows, but once again, more for the public's benefit, this action is not binding. There is still a process that requires other votes to take place. The Board of Selectmen will act on these items. And also, planning and zoning, it will be, both will require to be reviewed by planning and zoning, which is an H-24 referral. That will then be sent to the RTM and per ordinance, which, again, once again, for the public's benefit, and which will go to the next RTM. The RTM will then ratifies any action taken or approvals required to act in favor of the town acquiring any parcels with a favorable review of the planning and zoning. It just requires a simple majority. Absent that action of the planning and zoning, it requires, I believe, a two-thirds vote. So that's why we're here tonight, because there is a sense of, from both owners, that they want some assurance that this will move forward and rather than delaying this. Does that...
Sure, thank you.
Okay, so we're here now speaking on the Kenny issue. You've heard from a couple various stakeholder groups, Land Trust, Open Space. This was a parcel that was identified to the town. It butts the eastern edge. It's about, it is just roughly 11 acres of the eastern edge of the supply ponds. Our current trail system does go through this parcel, these properties. There is an actual third parcel, which is a very small, tiny parcel at the beginning of what they commonly refer to as Coonledge Road. It's right off of Chestnut Street. That was, is, the address is 138 Chestnut Street. That does also abut, let's call it the southwestern, there's a little tail of the supply pond that comes down, that does abut that. So for the reasons of the, you know, falls within our plan of conservation development, when we're acquiring open space, we should be looking at that's contiguous to other open space. There's the ecological benefits of it. There's the greenway benefit, where we're creating these pathways in town, throughout town, I think, that all connect to one another, and you can connect various neighborhoods based through this, through our open space that we have acquired over the years and connected. This is another 11 acres to, that abut it, will increase it, and it's already being used. But therefore, I think it falls in line with not only what the two, you know, the Parks and Open Space Commission represented, the chairman stated their mission, the Land Trust, but also our plan of conservation and development, which was adopted in 2019. Any specific questions?
So we had an appraisal done, and the Kennys had an appraisal done, and so we're paying a premium over this...
Well, over our appraisal. They had, they had appraisal that was significantly higher. I believe it was, you know...
Their appraisal was $523,000.
Yes.
And they were, they mentioned a number to you of $250,000.
They submitted a letter to offer to the town for $250,000. I had, as I mentioned, I had our, we had explored this several years ago. We had an appraisal done then. There was some new information, primarily that there was right-of-way access to these parcels, which didn't get picked up in their original appraisal. The appraiser took that information, and he came up with $130,000. That was for the two parcels, the roughly 11 acres on the eastern edge. We didn't update the appraisal on that small, little, less than a third of an acre parcel that's 138 Chestnut Street. So we then, through negotiation, settled between that, that number of our appraisal, 130 minus that 138 Chestnut Street, and their number of, their initial offer of 250 at a number of $195,000, which they accepted.
Okay. Questions from the board? Jim, any comments on the financing you've arranged? You've spelled out that there's appropriate amounts, fund balance to utilize?
Yeah, the only thing, as you saw in the letter, but for the public's sake, is, you know, our subdivision regulations assess a fee in lieu of open space. And while the Open Space Fund originally set up, I believe in the early 2000s, was designed for those monies to basically be available for, say, closing the quarry at some point in time and maintaining that, you know, the subdivision regulations specifically say they're to be used for the purchase of open space. So there's a little bit of an internal accounting there. And so the amount of money that's been taken into the Open Space Fund in lieu of open space since 2016, just going back a number of years, is in excess of the $195,000. So it's seen an appropriate use of those dollars.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so we have those two resolutions that I read previously for the $195,000. Do you want to vote?
I'll move it, Joe.
Move them both?
I'll second it.
Both have been seconded. Discussion, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Item number three is to consider and act on the proposed resolution, resolution authorizing appropriation of $10,800,000 for East Industrial Road, real property acquisition, and financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligations of the town in notes in anticipation of such bonds in amount not to exceed $10,800,000. Therefore, I to recommend the resolution for adoption by the representative of town meeting. Jamie, would you like to begin discussion on this?
Well, as we know, and as stated tonight, this has a permanent facility for Public Works, has been a longstanding issue, you know, over 15 years now, given that it was relocated to what was intended to be a temporary facility after the, with the construction of fire headquarters on North Main Street. Credit to the department that they were able to operate out of that facility. They made it work. I think there's been some great advances within the department, both in terms of the scope of work they do, but that has primarily to do with the leadership and the, and the men that are, make up the department. As the board is aware, we were noticed that we had to relocate. They were not going to continue to lease to us. Their current tenant, which took probably 80% of the building, over 80% of the building, needed space to expand, so we needed to find a new location. I had updated the board at that time that we would be looking, you know, not only for temporary facility, which you had approved a lease at 30 East Industrial Road, but we would also be looking for a full, a permanent facility. That temporary facility, you may recall, we engaged in a two-year lease with a couple options of six months or a year after that, a couple options that we could do if needed. Once again, it was just meant to be a temporary facility, and we were looking in earnest at a permanent location. We went back, we identified, we looked at a number of sites in town, and even during that process, when we were looking for the temporary, we were also keeping an eye, where could we physically go as a department? We went back and looked at, you know, what the town had looked at previously. Back in 2012, there was a committee that was put together that actually issued an RFP. The town issued an RFP and received proposals for various sites, and they also looked at a number of town sites. None of those came to fruition, or none of them were feasible. That's what led to the temporary location. However, I did take a second, second look at those. One of them was 1521 East Industrial Road, which, and the report was dismissed because of the only inflated, it was cost at the time. However, I will point out, the cost was actually less than what was being proposed as an alternative. We went and the town, myself, Public Works Director, the engineering department, primarily the Assistant Town Engineer, looking at the site, looking at what other towns' needs were. We know that there is a facilities and staffing plan for the Fire Department, which includes a building out east. a building out east, which, by the way, was discussed for years, as mentioned. We know that in Town Hall, we have, we're beginning to push up against a space issue with lack of office space. We know, not only with the, we had to find a home for Public Works and the Fire Department, but what are some of the other needs? And we know with Board of Education, with the Parks and Rec Department, and even getting back to the Fire Department, you know, if you go by Fire Headquarters now, I mean, they have quite a bit of equipment that's being stored. I mean, the chief can speak to it, but they're, they're exceeding capacity in what they can physically fit in that building right now. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that ought to be stored inside. We then quickly, through that assessment, took a, you know, look at, again, 1521, and what we could accommodate on the site, and it is more than adequate to accommodate all those things that I just mentioned. Public Works, outdoor storage for Public Works. We had, we have a, I have a concept plan, which not only looked at our current, what we currently have for outdoor storage and the space needed, but they increased that by a factor to expand, to account for growth. That lays out on the site. We took the firehouse that was designed to sit on the Gould Lane, or Acorn Road. That is more than accommodated on the site with plenty of room. We looked at the office space, that is, not only will accommodate the department, Public Works Department, but it will easily accommodate the Engineering Department within that building, which, by the way, I strongly advocate that there should be, we're fortunate enough because of the great staff that we have, that they work collaboratively with each other, but I do think down the road that a future, that they should look at greater integration within departments, which we've accomplished with other departments and have seen great success in that. So I, I think this allows for, naturally allows for that further integration of Engineering and Public Works. The, the building and the site will accommodate that other storage needs, both inside storage as well as outdoor storage, and I mentioned those other departments, primarily Parks and Rec and Board of Education. You go through any school or any park right now, you're going to see some, you know, pieces of equipment laid outside. You know, it shouldn't be that way. If we have an opportunity to get them inside, get them inside. The building itself, I just want to speak to 15 East Industrial Road, sits on just over three acres. It's about just under 30,000 square feet. As I said, the bays, we have far, far more efficient use of the space that we would find in any other building, due to its nature of what it was constructed and what it was used for. It has the high ceilings, it has the number of bays, it has the drain, it has the, we've heard often, we need a wash bay. It has a bay that is built to be a wash bay with the proper drainage and oil separators that are required. It has a lift system, the crane system, which, and our lifts are portable, we'll bring over. It has significant heavy mezzanine for storage. The building will work, it's, it'll accommodate the department. Also, when I look at the location and viewing with staff, they feel the access to Route 1, Leets Island Road, I-95, they feel that the location will allow for adequate response times needed. Same with Fire. You know, oftentimes, we hear every budget year, we hear about the calls and the volume and the demand on the department. We also know that they provide a lot of mutual aid, which we, we receive in kind, in turn, but to Guilford and North Branford. That location, not only does it service, is perfect for the east side of town, that needs to be reserved, but in meeting our mutual aid requirements, you can quickly access, once again, Route 1, I-95, Leets Island, 139, School Ground, you can access it quickly to get to those other towns that we provide needs. 21 East Industrial Road is 2.255 acres, so the total is five and a third acres. That's the total of the site. We had a concept laid down, which, like I said, which clearly shows that we can accommodate the firehouse with more recent discussions. I think we also need to look at, which I know it's been, it's been mentioned, but it probably hasn't been pushed in any earnest fashion at this point, because of, obviously we need to meet facility needs, but we also need to meet our training requirements. The town is growing. If we can do training in town, we're better served by that. It's a less pressure on the department to have their, their men and women of the Fire Department trained in town. We did a quick, you know, just space allocation. This can accommodate a training facility on, on site. So there is a lot of benefits to it. I will also mention, there's, as part of this agreement, the company that currently occupies it is looking to, you know, relocate. They ideally like to relocate in Branford. They're looking at sites, but they're going to need some time with that. So, they want to, what we had agreed upon, because we would secure this site through a purchase, and we would enter into a lease-back agreement, where they would lease back the property at $10 a square foot, and for a period of two years, and we agreed to two six-month options. So, which, once again, we signed, we would fulfill our obligation at our temporary facility. We allow the current occupant to have adequate time to find a, a new location and relocate, but we'll be receiving revenue every year, you know, roughly, let's call it $290,000. The purchase of this also frees up the parcel that we were holding for a town-owned parcel on Acorn Road for the future Fire Department, if they need it. We identified that locate, that space primarily because we owned it. However, with doing a layout, you're sitting right on the edge of a residential neighborhood. It is very cramped with, with the building, just a two-bay building, and the living quarter space, and the required parking on that site. This will allow us to sell that property, and the revenue, the proceeds from that would go to offset the debt for this building. Third source of revenue I ought to be mentioning, the building currently comes with a solar, rooftop solar array, which nets anywhere between $60,000 to $80,000 a year in, in revenue to the owner. So once again, there's another revenue component of this deal. This solves a longstanding issue, the cost of 10.8. If you look at what land prices are if we were to acquire, plus construction costs, particularly on municipal projects, it is, I think this is a very fair deal for, for the town, for the taxpayer. It addresses a longstanding issue that's been, you know, here for 15 years. It gives us some certainty where the department will go, but also addresses many other town needs. You know, once again, getting back to the cost of constructing, if you, I have attached the appraisals, which give a description of the building and the space. Both comment on the construction of the building, how it's superior to what you would typically find. They say, well, why is that important? I think it speaks to the longevity of, of the building and what we can expect to get out of this building. You know, we, we know that new construction doesn't, doesn't last as long as old construction, excuse me. And we, so I think that's, I mean, we're, the town is where, in, should be around in perpetuity, and we want our buildings to be constructed in a way that lasts, you know, decades. And I think this building does it. The, has a lot to offer, and I'm willing to entertain any questions that may have, the board may have.
Thanks, Jamie. Harry, you have a question?
I'm good.
Deborah?
What's up?
Yvette?
No, sir.
Jeff?
Oh, I do.
You do?
What do we think roughly Acorn Road would sell for?
You know, I, I don't want to commit to, we had, so just so you're aware, if you're not aware, for the public's benefit, that, that, we took that property, the town took that property, I believe through foreclosure action. It had an environmental issue. We did a cleanup on the property, and we, we expect, we've had, we re-engaged deep to get that cleared, or that closed out, and we're in that process. So I think, until we get that, I think that'll indicate, you know, what the price, that'll give us a better, better idea of what the price is after we actually have that, that closeout certificate from deep. It's a small parcel. I will, though, I mean, there has been, there has been interest from, from people who have contacted the town, inquiring about the parcel, going back a couple of years now, and have always said, well, we're holding it at this time, but I don't have.
Even a bulk?
It's probably, well, how much was it?
Well, the field card, you know, as a base of reference, which shows, as Jamie said, the town owning it, shows the value at 361.
And then the other thing that I was trying to look up, and I can't remember, the, how much is the lease that we're paying for, for the temporary location for Public Works for the two years?
Well, there's a couple, it's about 950, or 850, 850 a square foot, and then we have some camp, 850, and then some camp charges.
You good, Yvette?
Yes, sir.
Jeff, questions?
Jamie, can you identify some of the parcels that were looked at back in 2012?
2012?
That's when you had that report done.
Yeah, that's right, and this is, so, just go down the list. Some town-owned parcels were Tabor Drive and Veterans Park. And then for the private properties that were looked at were 1521 East Industrial Road, I'm sorry, yeah, number two, 2 Tabor Drive, 114 School Ground Road, 20 Northeast Industrial Road, 688 East Main Street, and Baldwin Drive. So, 688 East Main Street, Baldwin Drive, have since been developed. Well, they've been, yeah, since developed, and they're, the, the other parcels, you know, were excluded due to their fatal flaw, and there's some, some other issues I don't want to go into.
No, no, I understand.
But, there is a report, but, and I don't think we should be using Veterans Park.
No, because you give up the park, and if you cut into Tabor now, at this point, you're going to lose other recreational space. Thank you.
So, Jamie, I did note in the appraisal that there was no functional or external obsolescence in, for the building that they mentioned.
Yep.
So the building was well-constructed and in good shape?
Yeah, yes.
Rhetorically, or?
Yeah. No, and we viewed, right, I mean, the building has been well-maintained, as, and again, a lot of it, too, is that both appraisals mentioned about the, the materials used to construct that building, that they exceed what you'd standard, you'd standard, you typically see, structural steel, as well as foundation and slabs. That building was originally built by Fusco Corporation, who, who built tall buildings, and, you know, they built their own building to, even though it's a one, primarily a one-story, there has the two-story where the offices are, they obviously used that to a standard as if it was a tall building, in terms of, when you look at the steel that they utilized, and the cut, the footings and the foundation and the slab.
And do you, do you anticipate any environmental issues out there?
No, we don't anticipate any. They had, I believe they're, a tanker went, and that has since been removed. There's nothing there, but of course, we're going to do our due diligence. So this, as I said, that there's a, a process to this beyond, this is just the first step, but we would, if we entered into, if we receive favorable approval, Board of Finance, and then ultimately RTM, we would enter into a purchase service agreement, which, we would also do our due diligence through that process, which we'd also do any environmental research that would be necessary.
Okay. And the, the 10.8 is the purchase price?
Purchase price, yes.
And the, originally, they asked, they were looking for 13 million?
Yes.
And then subsequently, they were at 11.5?
Yes.
And, and were at, you were able to negotiate?
Negotiate to the 10.8. There was a few exchanges, right.
Right, which again, is a premium above our appraisals.
Over their appraisal, it's a premium about 11%. I would say, you know, it's, for, for the town to buy a property, you know, we're very limited in what, and for this specific use, we're limited in what's available. So I think you can expect to pay a premium, but also, I'd just say, in general, on the market, I mean, even with, you know, the appraisals give you a, a number, a range, they had, but ultimately, it comes down to negotiations and price, and that's where we landed. But, you know, I'm sure with what's happening in the market, many of them are going at a premium.
Yeah.
We're aware of that, we've seen it.
And, Yvette?
One more, just a quick question, just to have an idea, what are we talking about needing to spend to get it ready to move in Public Works?
So I think for Public Works, certainly there'll be some, some modifications, but the building, it's, and some requirements, you know, that's moving our IT over, you know, and those, the IT infrastructure, although it has an IT room, but having things switched over to there, there's maybe some minor things we would want to do in terms of accessing the building, and, and just, you know, making the space, the office space really ours. It, we don't really have, we don't have a full scope, but I could tell you that that building, because of its use, there's no change of use that's going to be required. So everything that's in the building and code-ized is, is the same use, that we are going to be using what's being used now, what was, what the building was constructed for. So it would be minimal that we would do, but, but the building itself, and that was one of the other selling points, is, this building itself is more, is essentially as turnkey as we're going to find. Now, you know, we're going into a temporary location, we're going to have to make modifications to that building to make it work. The building we just left, we had to make, you know, there was a building committee that was tasked with, you know, moving forward with those modifications. This building here, you know, we, we feel it has, I mean, again, Public Works Directors here, or Assistant Town Engineers here, I think we, we can all, we all came up to the same conclusion, that it is nearly as turnkey as you're going to find. But, you know, I do expect that there will be an appropriation, furniture, IT, slightly, yes.
I meant more than furniture.
No, 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 no.
Sorry about that.
No, no, his questions are good. Jim, with regards to the funding of this, this would initially be taxable notes issued by the town?
Yeah, correct, Joe, and I, I think that's an important point to bring up. I, I know you guys have read the letter, but for the folks watching on TV, because we are leasing the property back to a, a private entity, our bond counsel, who basically, one of the functions they do is make sure that we're complying with all the tax laws so that we could issue on a tax-exempt basis. In this case, because of the lease, this would be deemed private use. And so taxable rates typically have a higher rate than tax-exempt rates, and, but, sort of the way that I would recommend that the town deal with this in the future, is that we initially sell taxable notes for one year, could be less, then roll the notes. When I say rolling the notes, a note comes due and you finance it with another note, and then along the way, making principal paydowns. So, if we're financing 10.8 notes, we'd be, our first principal paydown would be $540,000, which would basically be 1/20th of that. which would basically be 1/20 of that. And then when the building converts back to public use, so in other words, when the current, when the tenant moves out and Public Works moves in, then it would be deemed public use, and then we could refund those taxable notes with tax exempt debt, and then we would be pretty much doing the financing like we do all of our other financings. So there is that period in between where it's private use, and we'll basically comply with the laws, and we'll, we'll, we'll issue notes and roll them during the period in which it's private use.
So while that might cost an extra 100 basis points or so, that's partially offset by the revenue that's coming in through the rent and the solar, solar revenue. Other questions or comments from the board? Questions from Jamie or Jim? So I'm going to again read the authorization here, and if this is, again, resolved that the, resolved that the resolution authorizing an appropriation of 10 billion 800,000 for the East Industrial Road, real property acquisition, financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligations, bonds of the town in notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed 10 million 800,000, therefore be adopted and recommended to the adoption, for adoption by the representative of town meeting. Is there a motion to waive reading of the, the full incorporated resolution?
So move it.
I'll second.
Moved by Yvette, seconded by Jeff. Is there?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Yep.
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. And is there a motion and a second favorite to adoption of the resolution?
I'll move it.
Second?
Moved by Harry, seconded by Deborah. Is there discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, the board, for meeting.
Good luck, and thank you to the audience for their participation. Yeah. Last on the agenda is number, item number four, adjournment. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Moved by Jeff, seconded by Deborah. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.